I see you.
Welcome, everyone. Got my gavel. Good evening. I'd like to call to order our May 21st, 2020 teleconference council meeting. We're glad to have everyone online and streaming tonight, and we'd like to welcome all of our citizens who are watching and following. Glad to have you with us and looking forward to having you back here in person. So but we like to start, I'd like to start since we're a teleconference meeting as we have been in the past few weeks of calling, doing a roll call attendance for the minutes to make them official. And I will start with council members in Ward One, Councilmember McGrew.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Ward Two, Councilmember Tolan.
Here.
Ward Three, Councilmember Estes.
I am present.
Ward Three, Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present. And also join us, City Manager, Mr. Peppers.
Good evening.
Assistant City Manager Nathan Ingram.
Good afternoon.
City Clerk Annie Fortner.
I'm here.
Utility Engineer Dave Hatavian.
I'm here.
City Attorney Bobby Dyer.
I'm here.
Okay. I can see you. I was looking for you on there. So anyone else with us online that I missed? Okay. Welcome. And I'd like to start with a consideration to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. I believe we do need to add an executive session. Is that correct, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, an executive session for litigation and real estate.
Okay. Executive session for litigation and real estate. Of course, we'll add that to the end. We'll adjourn to that. Any other changes to the agenda? Now, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Tolan made the motion to have a second.
Second.
Ms. McGrew made the second. Again, we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor say aye. Ms. McGrew.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Tolan.
Aye.
Mr. Estes. You're mute, but he's raising his hand, so we'll make that official.
Aye.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Okay, all members voted to approve the agenda with a change of the executive session. At this time, we have, you have your draft minutes from the May 7th teleconference meeting. Are any changes or any discussion on those minutes? If not, I'll take, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. This is Brooke.
Ms. Schmidt, make a motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Wilson, I think, up first. So I have Ms. Wilson second the motion. So again, roll call vote to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye. Ms. McGrew.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Tolan.
Aye.
Mr. Estes.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
All members voted to approve the minutes. We'll begin with old business. These were items we discussed in our last meeting, and we will bring them up. These are for possible action and any further discussion if necessary. But item, old business item A is discussion of possible action to award the Amos Road Booster Pump Station Improvements Project to Lanier Construction in the amount of $653,311. Mr. Hatavian.
Yeah, like I said, last week, we put this out for bid in accordance with all the laws and regulations. Lanier was low bidder and recommend to award it to them. It's like I said before, it's part of the Laurel Canyon project so that we'll be able to do maintenance on Canyon tank.
Correct. Okay. Any other, I know we discussed this quite a bit at our last meeting. Any other discussion questions for Mr. Hatavian? See, and now I'll take an entertain a motion.
This is Nick. I'll make a motion to approve. Specifically, I will say to approve. I'll be phone you as a friend to tell me what I apologize. All right, anyone else want to make the motion?
Yeah, this is, I'd be happy to make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the the award of the Amos Road Booster Pump Station Improvement Project to Lanier Construction Company in the amount of $653,311.
Thank you, Mr. Tolan. Do I have a second?
This is Brooke. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Ms. McGrew.
Aye.
I would second that. This is Nick.
Oh, you're waiting. Aye, excuse me, aye.
Mr. Tolan.
Aye.
Mr. Estes.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
All members voted for the motion. Old Business Item B, Discussion of Possible Action to Reauthorize Cooperation with Cherokee County Community Development Block Grant Program. Again, we discussed this, and it's an annual an annual contract and program, and it's basically motion to authorize the mayor to sign the the agreement.
I make a motion, I make a motion to reauthorize the cooperation with the Cherokee County Community Development Block Grant Program and authorize them.
Okay, so we have a motion. Great. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. A motion of Ms. Wilson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, that Mrs. McGrew. So any other further discussion? So all in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. Ms. McGrew.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Tolan.
Aye.
Mr. Estes. Mr. Estes. I think you're freezing up on us there.
Freezing.
Aye, aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Okay, all members voted for the motion. Motion passes unanimously. So move right along to new business. We do have, we have a few new business items for this meeting that were timely and we needed to to discuss and possible action on. We typically don't do this when we haven't discussed them before, but they are timely, and so we do need to discuss them and entertain action on them tonight. Begin with item A, discussion and possible action on resolution and support for downtown development revolving loan fund application at Thrive Canton LLC. Mr. Peppers, would you like to discuss this?
Absolutely. Good evening. A downtown development revolving loan fund is basically a financial tool that the state uses to provide funding for permanent capital for projects in the downtown area. They do those through downtown development authorities. And so in this instance, Thrive Co. Work, which is building out a space at Millon Etowah, had applied for a low income loan through the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. They will fund up to 40% of a project for a maximum of $250,000 and a 2% interest rate. It's a 15-year loan that's paid back in 10 years, so there's a balloon payment in the last year. We received notification the first of May that Department of Community Affairs had approved their loan. The state does the loan through a downtown development authority and then ultimately through the borrower, which would be Thrive Co. Working. And so what we have done is put before your resolution. Ultimately, the city's responsibility in this is just to basically have this resolution stating that the project meets our zoning, the project is in our downtown, and the project is being run through our downtown development authority. Yesterday, the downtown development authority had a meeting to approve a resolution and assign the award statements with the state. So all we need is for this portion of the city side of the resolution to be completed, and we'll be basically finished with the project from our end.
Thank you. I had the good fortune to tour the Thrive space progress last week with my mask on. There weren't very many people in there, but it's a beautiful space, and I was just really blown away by the work they've done in there. And they're very generous and kind and offered meeting space for the city and all, but I, once we are allowed to to be together again, I asked them if they would entertain a tour for city council, and of course, they said yes, and so we look forward to that. But it's a beautiful space. You guys are going to be blown away, so. Any questions about this?
Who owns the space? Can you tell us the owner?
The owner of the space is the Millon Etowah, so it's listed as Pendleton, Hodge, and Grant Schmilke. Thrive Canton LLC, Thrive at Canton LLC is actually the name of the business that will receive the loan. And I should mention, the way the loan works, it's secured completely by the project. And so the city and the downtown development authority can never be in fault to the state, so it's personally secured.
Got it. We just have to basically sign off as approval and support of it, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. McGrew.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution of support for downtown development revolving loan fund application for Thrive at Canton LLC.
Thank you, Ms. McGrew. Have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Schmidt, second the motion. Are there any other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye, opposed say nay. Ms. McGrew.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Tolan.
Aye.
Mr. Estes.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
All members voted to approve the resolution. New Business Item B, Discussion of Possible Action to Approve Change Order Number One to Atkins for Design Service for the Expansion of the Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $84,732. Billy Engineer, Mr. Hatavian.
Yeah, it's, I want to go over a little bit of how we got to this point and try to make it pretty brief. Back in 2017, when ESI was working on the original design development report, they collected data for a three-year period from January 2013 to December 2016 and used that as the basis of design and submitted that to EPD. And they came up with a plan that was pretty much using our existing technology. And EPD approved it in, I think, March of 2018. Subsequent to that, we put out an RFP for Professional Services to do the expansion, which was to be based on that design development report. Atkins was the, was the low bidder. And one of their first tasks was to review the approved DDR and compare it with, you know, present data and everything like that. And one, what came out of that was that the current strength of the wastewater increased a lot since the DDR was approved. Some of the constituents increased in concentration from 25% higher to over 100% higher. So in order to make this thing work, we had to go back and either try to make the thing fit on the site or look at a bunch of different options to try to make it work. When we finally came to the conclusion we couldn't fit it on the site, we had to change technologies, and we decided to go with the membranes, which is a state-of-the-art facility right now. And with that came additional work of interviewing different membrane manufacturers, going through an RFP process to select the best membrane for the project. And we went through that and moved forward. Also during that time, we, we said, well, let's address our sludge disposal problem, which we know is, is kind of an issue. And we decided we wanted to add a dryer to the plant. We've done the same thing. We went through an RFP process, and as of this afternoon, I think we have pretty much decided on a venture. We're still waiting for a couple more bits of information from them. One of the benefits of this dryer, it will basically allow us to go to beneficial reuse on the sludge, meaning we could use it as fertilizer. We could, you know, take it one step further, pelletize it and use it or whatever, but if we, even if we still dispose it in landfill, it'll be a lot fewer trips, it'll be a lot drier, and our go down. Couple with that, we had to do a new design development report to EPD, which was submitted last week, I believe. And during this whole process, what we decided to do was to keep on the project like we were planning, as it fell into place, but stay within the existing budget. And then, you know, once we've figured out where we are in terms of budget, we will go for a change order after, you know, we're pretty much exhausted our current budget. So right now, this this change order will take us all the way through bidding services, which, you know, should be, you know, close to the end of this year. We're looking to submit plans to be probably in July for approval and hopefully have it on the street in September. And so it's, unfortunately, it was one of those things that nobody had control over, and I don't know why. Everything has changed. We have had some extremely high phosphorus concentrations, and we have tried to sample out in the system to find our source. We've kind of narrowed it down, but we haven't found where the source is coming from. It just varies, so. That's kind of where we're at and how we got here. And I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Mr. Estes, it looks like you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, being on the eating this infrastructure project with Mr. Hatavian and others, you know, just to add. I believe, you know, stated it, but to reiterate, the the cost, the goal was to still stay within the total budget. The limitations were certainly the site. And so, you know, there's a lot of unknowns as the team really started digging in, and I actually applaud them for thinking a lot outside the box. You know, they'll give us something that will be convertible up to 7 million gallons per day, even though the original request was for six. Even though, even though permit was for, it really gives us a good opportunity to invest the site we have, as he said, make a state-of-the-art plan and minimize the amount of capital investment if we were to have to go back to it in many tens of years from now. So again, I think it is, it is a bit higher on the change order, but that was a little bit by design. We did ask them to do a lot of work to increase their scope and help us think more creatively about what this, what this could be and how we do this in the most efficient way possible and give us the best return on our investment.
Thank you. Mr. Hatavian, so am I hearing you say that, so we're switching kind of the technologies? Are we still anticipating staying within the original budget?
No. You mean construction budget?
Yes.
No, it's gone up quite a bit. We're probably going to be high 40s, low 50 million dollar range. But the thing that you, you need to remember, I mean, it's still an awful lot of money, but just expanding the plant by 2 million gallons a day, we're essentially doing a, a new membrane facility, six MG or seven MGD facility from, you know, and order of magnitude that's used for estimating construction costs is about $10 a gallon. So just do in simplistic terms, if we're going at 6 million gallons a day, you know, you're looking at $60 million, $60 million. And we're less than that. I mean, it's still an awful lot of money, but.
How will this impact the, kind of the rate study and the report we got? You know, anticipating rates and, and, you know, showing that, you know, we had the funds to pay for this going forward, but that based on 60 million? Was it based on what we estimated before?
Nathan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we plugged in 40 million in the rate study. Yes, there about.
I would just mention, Mr. Mayor, that if you'll recall, when we went over the rate study and discussed the wastewater treatment project, it also had a starting within a couple of years, the water treatment project, which we may be able to delay a little bit. So and then as the five-year grant will also going to be dropping off debt that we have in the reservoir. So we should be in a good position from a rate standpoint.
Right. So that rate study included the new water plant as well, right? Which we were looking at some possible other options at as well.
It included the startup of the design on that.
Okay. And then one other thing, and I know there's some other questions here, but am I reading this correct, that the new, the sludge drying process, is that an additional $7.5 million for that?
That's included in that cost, yes. But that was, I think that was the number that they used in their, their, their study.
So a good percentage of that increase is from that new technology?
Yeah, you know, it's somewhere around, what percent? We were talking today, so 8 to 10%, something like that.
Yeah. And they're anticipating, it says a four to 11-year timeframe for payback for that by not having to
Yeah, I want to say, I can't remember what that's, what their announcement shows.
Four to 11, four to 11. On the landfill tipping fees, which we all know will just continue to increase, so.
Yeah, but, you know, being in this situation where you have a material that you could, you know, use, have beneficial reuse where your number of trips are going to be vastly reduced. So I think we'll be in a better place and not so dependent on landfills as they fill up and close. I mean, Atlanta is taking a lot of this sludge to Alabama right now.
Right.
So I think from a standpoint of I think we're actually in a good position to get this dryer in now, given the situation with.
When you, when you say now, what does that mean, like?
I mean, you know, doing this now as opposed to in a couple of years when it, you know, it gets more and more, you know, stringent on with the landfills.
So you're saying we put in the dryer system first?
No, no, it is, no, I mean, now is a part of this project.
Okay, okay, thanks, thanks. Ms. Wilson, I think you had your hand raised.
I do. So does this affect the construction timeline, this change order? And if it does, what are we looking at now for the construction?
The construction, we're, we're looking at about a 42-month overall construction period. It's, I don't think it's affected it that much. But, but we're still also looking at getting capacity, hydraulic capacity in about two years after construction begins.
When, when you estimate it might begin?
At the end of this year.
Okay, like December 2020?
Yeah, hopefully. You know, once we get him on this advertiser construction, given the size of it, we'll probably go a little longer than a, than a full week advertising period. At the same time, we're putting out requests for qualifications to pre-qualify contractors for this project as well.
Does the water, water plant still, still into play with this construction as well, or that'll be after?
That would be after.
Okay.
Ms. McGrew.
Thank you. Mr. Hatavian, I have two questions. How much have we been spending a year on sludge removal?
$200,000 maybe. Nate, you may remember more than I do. Somewhere, you know, 200, 180, 200,000.
I believe that's the number you mentioned before when I asked you this a few months ago. Also, I know you won't know the concrete answer to this question, but if you have a ballpark, I'd appreciate it, and if you don't, I completely understand. What amount of savings do you foresee with us line the sludge and hauling it off and using some fertilizer? What, what amount of save will realize?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I know there was a presentation that Atkins did that had a whole present worth and analysis and payback period. Let me step back a little bit on the reasoning for going to the, to the dryer was primarily to read the tip fees and but the more I got into this and reading up on these dryers and producing, I say sludge, which can be, you know, used as fertilizer. I mean, you could make it available free of charge to the citizens if they want to come and get it. That's just less that you'd have to dispose of. So that was kind of an afterthought. So I don't really have an idea of how much would be reused at this time, but I can probably try to find something out for you. But again, it's hard to say because that wasn't our primary goal. It was just, you know, kind of hit me as I was reading all these proposals. It's, well, maybe we do want to look at beneficial reuse.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Ingram just shared a message that it's been averaging between 170,000 and 225,000.
A year or a year?
A year.
Yes, ma'am, that's a year.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ingram and Mr. Hatavian.
Mr. Hatavian. Do we, I know we had done the assessment before, sort of our capacity, what we had left, given the past couple of months and you know, anticipated probably recovery from this virus and time. Do we anticipate that that is going to allow our capacity to last longer, or we? Impact on that or?
It's hard to say. I can tell you for 2020, we have been averaging 3.2 million gallons a day. Permit is four. You know, some of that was because of seven inches of rain in January, 11 inches of rain in February, which bumped up our average or flows. some of that was because of seven inches of rain in January, eleven inches of rain in February, which bumped up our average or flows. Um, you know, when coming into the summer months, it'll probably drop. So I, I would say we're probably gonna be in the three points, anywhere from three point one to three point three range for the rest of the year. Um, we haven't really, um, approved any major developments, um, other than, uh, for new, new sewer service. Um, we have been moving forward with residential, um, development. Like we've talked about, those aren't gonna kill you.
Right.
You know, they're, they're, you know, a little bit every month. So and, and the other thing is that, um, I believe some of the major builders have, have backed off a little bit on their building and um, are not, you know, blowing and going with spec homes. They may be doing, uh, just pre-sales right now.
Uh, would it be possible, um, for you to, in our work session each month, to, to share what that average is, uh, just each month?
Oh, absolutely.
Just so we're aware of what our current status is and we're not caught off guard?
Not a problem.
Here. I'd just be interested to see if, you know, if it is going down in the summer, I think that would give us a little bit more reassurance that we're, we're, we're staying on track. They are in a good, good position, so. Thank you. Need further questions or discussion? Mr. Esses?
I would, I would just make, uh, make a motion if there was no other comment to or the change order to act and it's for nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven eighty-two.
Motion for Mr. Esses. Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith, second the motion? All members who approve say aye and, uh, who are against say nay. Ms. Ms. McGrew?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Tolan?
Aye.
Mr. Esses?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
All members voted for the motion. It passes unanimously, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Hattian. So new business item C, um, discuss an impossible action on small business support through occupational license program. And this has my name on it. Uh, but several of us have been kind of working on this and talking about this. We know our small businesses, uh, you know, we know everyone has, has been suffering the last couple of months through this COVID situation and and, uh, we are certainly aware of that and want to do everything we can possibly do to help, especially our small businesses, uh, who have suffered a lot through that. So we've been looking at ways that, exploring ways that we could provide assistance, what's needed most now. Um, what we can possibly look at going forward. We know that it's not gonna be, you know, a silver bullet at one, one, you know, one solution. It's gonna be, you know, multiple solutions and ongoing, you know. Uh, we can't predict, you know, the future, what's gonna happen with this. We can't, you know, there's, there's, it's hard to predict revenues twenty twenty-one. There's, you know, it's hard to predict sales tax coming in for the splotch, how that's gonna be affecting it, you know, from, from the, you know, first quarter. Uh, so there are a lot of unknown variables. So we're, we're looking at what we can control, uh, what we could possibly do, what's within our power. Um, and, you know, the good report is, is, you know, I've been on these weekly calls, uh, you know, with, with mayors from around the country. Who are, you know, really in, their cities are in really bad shape as far as financials. I mean, they're already, their cities are already after two months, uh, are, you know, are really out of funds just because of two months of reduced, reduced revenues. You know, happy to say because of our, um, sound fiscal management that, that City of Canton is, is in, is in, is in great shape. Um, uh, compared to most. Uh, obviously, we're gonna have some challenges going forward and we will deal with those. But I'm, I'm, I'm proud to say that, that, you know, our team here and our council has done a great job and I'm sure we will continue to do so. So I think it gives us a little bit more leverage than, than most. Um, so we, uh, again, we wanted to look, look at what we could do. Uh, been working with city manager Peppers and assistant city manager, Mr. Ingram and, uh, with Ms. Schmidt, uh, who chairs our economic, uh, development committee. And we've been really working and sharing ideas and looking at, I mean, I think at everything possible and brainstorming and in the middle of the night and first thing in the morning and then, and, uh, probably all tired of texts and emails. But again, I, I want to applaud the team for, um, for, for really putting their, their minds together and looking at this. We also, you know, worked, talked to the Cherokee Office of Economic Development and, you know, they've been talking to local businesses in Cherokee County and, and said, you know, the, the, the number one concern that our businesses have and entrepreneurs have right now is, is cash flow, which, which really makes sense. And so we're looking at things, well, what could we do now? Um, and, and what can we do now for our small businesses to put money in their pocket? Of course, you know, we don't have money just to kind of, to pass out. But, um, we're looking at, on our business license, um, uh, for twenty twenty, uh, we have today, and of course, we, we know, we, we, at the last meeting, we, we approved, uh, the city manager to, you know, waive and, and do payment programs and, and to offer, you know, delayed payment on, on business license fees, uh, for our businesses who've been, you know, impacted by this crisis. Uh, and, uh, even though a lot of businesses have paid, you know, the good news is, um, we've already collected, uh, I think, uh, around around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that correct, Mr. Peppers? Or, yeah, over about eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, in business license fees for twenty twenty. Uh, we only had seven hundred and twenty-five thousand in the budget. Uh, so we are ahead of where we had budget, so we have some excess funds there. And so what we, and what this team is proposing, uh, and I'm, I'm thrilled to be able to propose this and I, I hope council will support this, is that we would like to offer a refund or waiver for those businesses who have not been able to pay their business license, uh, fees for twenty twenty to all locally owned businesses with fifty employees or less in the City of Canton. That would really cover about eighty percent of our businesses. But it's not really eighty percent of that, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. I mean, because our larger employers and our larger, you know, national companies, um, uh, still paying, you know, this kind of eighty, twenty, twenty rule. So, uh, we're actually kind of thinking that, you know, in running some initial calculations, I think, uh, Mr. Ingram, and he could speak to this, and Mr. Peppers ran and, and they're thinking about, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand may, may cover this, I, I believe was the range. Um, and, and we would, we would, they've got a system set up where companies would, you know, apply for this. So we would verify that there are, you know, locally owned and that they do have fifteen employees or less. We have, uh, uh, means of verifying that. Um, and so, you know, probably not every company would do that. So we, we actually think that the excess that we've collected in, in, uh, as opposed to the amount we budgeted would pretty much cover for the, cover this cost. Uh, if it, if it doesn't, we also have two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, in reserve from our hotel and motel tax, uh, in reserves. And so we're proposing that if there is, uh, you know, a shortfall, that we would transfer that two hundred thousand dollars into the general fund to cover the additional cost of that, so that these refunds to our, for our small businesses, uh, none of that would be coming from, you know, taxpayer funds. Uh, so it's, it's really from, from the, the revenues that are, that are generated from those businesses themselves and from the, you know, uh, uh, rental car tax funds, which, you know, we, we originally instated those, it was to really kind of help local businesses, help tourism. Uh, you know, we looked at some original things such as, you know, waiving costs for the first year and things like that, rental assistance. And so it really is what those were kind of designated for anyway. So, um, so we're, we're proposing this as a, uh, we're calling this the License to Recovery Program for the City of Canton, uh, small businesses. Uh, and again, this is, this is a phase one. Uh, again, we think we could do this relatively quickly and get, uh, you know, we're estimating that it's as little as a hundred dollars to, you know, sole proprietors up to two hundred, two thousand dollars for some larger companies, you know, that have, that have more employees. And so that, right now, that, you know, two thousand dollars is, is a lot of money to some of those people. So, uh, we would be, you know, I think, uh, proud to be able to do this for our companies, you know, throughout the city. The Downtown Development Authority and our Main Street, you know, did a great program, uh, with the gift card match program. Uh, uh, some of you may have seen that in, in the past, uh, week or so and, uh, where they, you know, matched, uh, for every ten dollars, uh, in gift card purchases. Uh, Main Street and DDA matched another ten dollars and for the companies that, that kind of sold out and insured the same amount of gift cards to all downtown businesses and merchants. And for the ones who sold out, uh, last, last week were presented with a fourteen hundred dollar check, uh, which is great. And so far, that, uh, has created a stimulus of around thirty-five thousand dollars just for downtown merchants alone. So that's a great program and I think something, again, we can be very proud of. Uh, we're, we're continuing to support those businesses who invested in our downtown. Think of, you also, um, recall that we did, um, pass an ordinance, uh, to, uh, to, to extend, well, to suspend the municipal code six, uh, dash one four eight A, which allowed local restaurants to have, um, who had consumption on premises license for alcohol sales of beer and wine, provide packaged sales of beer and wine to go. Uh, and I've heard from a lot of restaurants that that has really helped them, uh, through this time and, um, it's really been supportive and, uh, I did sign an order to extend that through June fifteenth. And I would like to propose, um, that we consider, number one, I'm asking for a motion to approve the, the, the business license refund, uh, License to Recovery Program. Uh, we can discuss that. Number two, I'd like to, to entertain a motion to ask Mr. Dyer to prepare an ordinance to allow the permanent uh, suspension of that code, which allow permanent, uh, sale of beer and wine license to go, which our restaurants should support them going forward. Uh, I don't, I haven't heard of any issues we've had with that. Uh, I think it would just continue to support them in the recovery, uh, again, as another phase. And then going forward, we have been discussing, uh, again, we're trying to be creative in, in every possible way to support our business and, and really to support economic uh, recovery as quickly as possible for the City of Canton. And, uh, we have had earmarked three million dollars in the splotched, recent splotched for economic development. But that was in, in real estate and it was very, the language of that is very specific. Um, and so we're trying to, you know, trying to look at that. And number one, we don't know, you know, how the the sales tax is gonna be impacted from this situation. So that's one that we have to, have to take a look at. And then number two, you know, how we can direct and if we can direct some of those funds to stimulate, you know, uh, businesses. You know, my thoughts were, could we direct those to, to, to new businesses or startups or entrepreneurs who, who want to start a business? Because starting a business in, in this environment is, you know, is, is, is a risky business and, and, and it's hard to have startup capital. So we could possibly look at, at some programs there, but that's gonna be another few months out before we can kind of see, number one, what, you know, what the, the sales tax revenues are gonna be. And then number two, really look at that language and really continue to, to think about what could even be possible there, if it is even possible there. So that, that's something we can look at down the road. So, but tonight, we wanted to talk about this business license program and refunds for twenty twenty. Um, and then, again, I wanted to propose the permanent, uh, extension of the, uh, beer and wine, uh, package to go restaurants. So Ms. McGrew, I'd see your hand up.
Thank you. Um, you had said within this, um, stimulus for the small businesses, uh, would this be for locally owned businesses only?
Yes, locally owned businesses with fifty employees or less.
Thank you. That was my next question. Fifty employees or fewer?
Yes, or less, or fewer, whatever you want to say.
It's fewer.
Yeah.
How much money will we be giving out if all of the applications are approved?
As I said, we're anticipating that if we, if ever, all those businesses, um, did apply for this refund, uh, Mr. Ingram has, has anticipated somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Ingram, is that correct?
That is correct, based on our preliminary estimate.
Okay. Is it legal for a city to give back money like this?
I would have to, uh, do some research.
Say again? Okay.
I would have to do some research. I, I think, um, we probably can waive fees. Are we refunding them? Probably okay. Especially under these circumstances. But I'll, I'll take a look.
I'm definitely in favor of this. I just want to be sure that it's within our legal capability to do it. That said, we'll be refunding, let's say, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's out of this year's budget and we're flush this year. Next year, we're not going to have a very good nest egg from which to work. Uh, how will we function next year?
Well, one of the reasons that we, uh, came up with this solution was that we do next year is, is, and we're gonna begin that budget process soon, but there's so many, uh, unknown variables, uh, for next uh, there's some things that we can predict and some things that we can't. Uh, but again, knowing that these businesses, number one, needs, uh, the sort of cash flow right now and money in their pockets right now. Um, we do have, uh, and we do have access as far as what was anticipated in the budget and what has been paid already. So we would have funds to, to, to finance this, uh, in hopes of, you know, generating, again, the recovery quicker, uh, and for future economic development for the city and hopefully keep as many of those existing businesses in business, uh, which I think is vitally important for our city. I mean, we were doing very well. I mean, at the same time, we, we have, you know, a new business open downtown tomorrow morning, which is, you know, incredible. And we have another new business that's opening, I think, uh, next week. Uh, so, I mean, we still have business activity. I'm still very optimistic. But I think anything we can do to support our businesses and to be the, uh, you know, be the champions of business and small business and entrepreneurs in Cherokee County and the region. Uh, we, we need to do that and anything within our means. And, you know, next year, I mean, is, we have some unknowns. Um, I'm still pretty optimistic, uh, but we will do what we need to do. Uh, we, we've been looking at that. I know Mr. Ingram's been looking at that and we've been discussing that and we've been looking at, you know, possible, you know, are there projects that could be deferred? And again, there, most of the projects, the large projects that we're looking at are all, you know, splotched or, you know, there's not a lot of things out of our general fund and the, you know, the, of course, the, the wastewater treatment plant is, is a huge expenditure, but that's out of, uh, water and sewer funds. So again, we are, um, you know, again, compared to most cities, uh, we are in, 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 in pretty solid shape. Uh, and that doesn't, you know, things could change, you know, next week, you know, if something else happens. But right now, they're, this is something that we can do and, uh, I think it'd be great if we could, so.
Again, I'm not opposed to this. I'm, I want to make sure that we, we can do it.
Right. Ms. Schmidt?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that this is basically, you know, a two a two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar boost to the local economy immediately, as soon as we can start approving these applications. Um, just to kind of put it in regular people terms. So I would like to make a motion, um, to approve the occupational license program, also called License to Recovery.
Second.
Did I make a suggestion on how the motion should be framed, given the questions?
Yes.
Perhaps we should just, uh, authorize the funding of the program.
Okay.
Cause I'm thinking we may have to run it through the DDA or the Main Street as a grant.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion. Oh, Nick?
You can finish.
Oh, okay.
Make the motion. We can have more discussions, though.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the funding for the City of Canton Occupational License Program for Small Businesses.
I second it.
A motion, uh, by Ms. Schmidt and a second by Ms. Wilson. Okay, Mr. Estes, you have?
Just a quick question. Yeah, no, I absolutely support this. I, I really appreciate, um, leadership, uh, by Mayor and, and, and others who have really, you know, thought outside the box to support this. Uh, the only logistics question I had was, do we need to have people apply for the refund or could we not just turn around and just send it back, um, and just save on some administrative stuff?
So, so I'll answer that question if it's okay. Um, and, and maybe it's in the terminology, uh, about refund or waiving, but ultimately the way I see it is the city is saying, if you're a locally owned business and you have less than fifty employees, this year, we're deciding that your occupational tax is zero. There's no, there's, I mean, we, we set our own occupational taxes and so that's what council's willing to do this year. Uh, what we do need is we need for businesses to apply so that basically they're signing an affidavit as part of their application that, one, they have less than fifty employees and two, they're locally owned. And then we can compare that information with what we have on file. And then if they have already paid, we would just refund them everything except for the twenty-five dollar annual application fee. Uh, and if they haven't paid, we would realize that we're not willing to zero out that, uh, tax charge for the year.
Okay. And I think, you know, also just going through this process, identifying, you know, those locally owned businesses with that, I mean, just having that list and having that knowledge and verifying that, I think is, is good for us going forward. Uh, and I think also acknowledging those companies and supporting those companies. Now I do know that our, our business license fee, uh, uh, you know, are, it said, you know, the businesses, I believe it says, you know, operate at the, at the pleasure of the city or whatever. I mean, my understanding is that we don't have to grant a business license to a business if we, we don't want to, but, so I'm wondering that. And I know that, you know, I think the City of Woodstock, maybe it's just downtown, but waives business license for the first year. I know we've looked at that before, so I don't, man, I'm, I know there's a way, I don't think there should be any legal issues with that, but we certainly need to, to check that out and make sure it's, it's all up and up, so.
So one question I have then, to keep referring to locally owned, and I'm sure Mr. Peppers will, will confirm, there will be all kinds of gray areas and edges and people wondering what that means. And so maybe we could get some kind of consensus. I'm assuming that what you mean is they have a place of business in Canton and that they're not a franchise or affiliated with a larger organization.
Um, I, I think what we had discussed, Mr. Dyer, is that, you know, if, if we have to, if we have to get your business license application from another state because you do your, all of your practices as part of a corporate from another state, you wouldn't be considered locally owned. But if you're a franchisee and you own that franchise here in the City of Canton, then maybe you would be considered locally owned. Ultimately, in my mind, the businesses that have been allowed to stay open the entire time and basically keep their operations open the entire time are those that wouldn't necessarily be considered locally owned. The grocery stores, the big box stores, uh, those are not franchises, those are not locally owned. Uh, some of the franchised restaurants wouldn't be locally owned if they met the employee count, uh, then they would be eligible.
I think a good example of that, Mr. Dyer, and we, we did discuss that was someone like Jersey Mike's, you know, it's a local franchise, they own the franchise, you know, great, great, great people, great company, you know, three, four employees, uh, who, you know, struggled during this time. And so again, there, it's a local, uh, citizen, you know, the City of Canton paying the, the business license fee. Uh, so we, we, we did discuss that, you know. There may be some cases that, that's some gray areas that, that common that you may, may slip through, but I think for the majority, um, you know, it should be pretty, pretty easy to determine that. But I think, you know, the majority wins, so.
So what, I mean, I'm, I'm maybe getting off on franchisee was not the right question. So if somebody lives in Forsyth County and owns a business in Canton, is that locally owned? Is that what we mean by local?
If the business is here, things like it.
They're, they're paying their business licenses in the City of Canton.
So that's just a local business then, because the ownership may not be local, that depending on how you define local. I'm sorry to.
No, no.
But we want, we had to answer so many questions about the shutdown where everybody's pushing the edges and do I qualify or do I don't?
Right, right. I mean, I think it's something. Mr. Ingram, go ahead.
As you can say, obviously, if you have a lot of shareholders, some of your larger S Corps or C Corps, you're probably going to have one, you're probably going to have over fifty employees anyway, so you're going to exclude yourself out of that, uh, under that requirement.
Right.
But, uh, most of the, most of what we're talking about, you're going to be your LLCs, um, your, those that file on a personal Schedule C, personal business, um, uh, obviously S Corps that are under a hun, will have to be under a hundred shareholders. So, um, I would, maybe we could say something like the majority stakeholders in the company reside within the City of Canton city limits or at least maybe Cherokee County. I think Cherokee County wouldn't that be considered local. Um.
Why wouldn't it just be if you, if your primary business address is Canton, which requires a occupation tax?
Totally agree, Mr. Estes.
Hey, and you get a refund. If you don't, you don't get a refund.
I'm afraid that we, anybody we bill for an occupational tax would be, would be the ones that we'd be talking about. If we bill them and they're in the city, then that's the people we're talking about.
Well, not, not technically because, you know, Walmart, for instance, pays an occupational tax, but their, but their business is not owned in the City of Canton. I guess what I'm thinking is if you file taxes for a location of your business and the address on your tax filing is Canton, then you're probably a locally owned business.
Yeah. Yeah. If I hypothetically had, um, a C Corp with however many shareholders and it was, happened to be out of Forsyth County, I wouldn't expect to get a refund and I wouldn't expect to either pay ever to Canton. And I, I think if you say it's cut and dry, I think the definition is around fifteen, right? I think that's probably the right way to think about it.
The employee count is going to impact it more than anything.
Yeah.
And that's what I was just going to say is everything that you're saying is really about it being small.
Right.
Not necessarily about it being local.
Right.
Right. But small businesses in Canton, in the city limits of Canton, so he's really... Ms. McGrew, did you have a question, comment?
Yes, I do. Uh, I need for you to, um, clear the number of employees. Is it fifty employees and fewer or is it fewer than fifty? Are we including the five, fifty or forty-nine is the cap?
Fifty and fewer.
Fifty and fewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Fifty would qualify. Fifty-one would not.
Thank you.
And we will, uh, you know, we will button this up, but, you know, make sure everything's legal and all that. But again, the goal is to get money in the pockets as soon as we can, as soon as we figure out the best way to do this. If everyone agrees. Any other questions? We have a motion.
Yeah, I do. I have one.
Mr. Tolan?
Uh, since the, uh, the refund is not going to be automatic, have, has the team decided on the mechanism to let the, the business owners know to apply?
Yes.
Yes, sir. What we would do is we would send out, uh, a letter to all business licensees that we have. We have twelve hundred licensees. We would let them know about the program. In the letter, we would provide them with a link. Uh, it would be mailed to the address that we have on file for the licensee. Uh, we would likely give them, I'm just going to throw out some dates. If we said that we were going to start the program, uh, we would likely give them to July thirty-first to apply. Some of them might take a little bit longer depending on accounting and things like that. Uh, we could, we could turn around and process these in a matter of a couple of weeks, maybe at the max on, on, on refunds and what have you. Um, so that would give everybody about two months to, to go through the process, apply and then get refunds. Um, but we would send them to a link to our website, to a form that they would fill out and then send in, uh, that would basically have their affidavit that they have less than fifty employees and then we can do our own verification.
Sounds easy enough. Thank you.
Okay. So any other further discussion or questions?
Who did the motion?
Uh, Ms. Schmidt had a motion to approve the funding for the License to Recovery Program to refund business license fees for businesses with fifty or fewer employees in the City of Canton. And Mr. Estes, I think, seconded or Ms. Wilson seconded. Ms. Wilson seconded, sorry, excuse me there. So all in favor of the motion say aye, all opposed say nay. Ms. McGrew?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Tolan?
Aye.
Mr. Estes?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
All members voted for the motion. Thank you very much. I'm very excited about this and I know our small businesses will appreciate this support and, uh, again, we'll continue to look at ways to support them. I'm excited to, to, some of the things we're looking at to also spur, uh, new business investments and, and new entrepreneurs, um, in our city going forward. I mean, I think that's the other side we have to look at. And so we'll continue working and, uh, looking and thinking outside the box in every way possible and to, to move Canton forward and to, to make sure. I mean, it's not just about, you know, these businesses, but it's about our entire local economy and, and making sure that we recover as quickly and faster than anyone else. So, uh, we're, we're dedicated to that. So the other item, uh, I proposed there, um, was to, I suggested, uh, to, to discuss was a firm, a permanent suspension, uh, of the Municipal Code six dash one forty-eight A, allowing local restaurants to have consumption on premises license for alcohol sales of beer and wine to provide packaged sales of beer and wine, um, and making that, um, permanent. And I believe that would be an ordinance change, Mr. Dyer, if we did. Um, and if we did that, it would, would it require a public hearing and require what would be the process if we did that? I'm just, I'm throwing it out there to, to see if we did that and if we wanted, wanted to do that as part of our, our June, uh, work session and...
I would, I would prepare an ordinance and present it for the June meetings. We don't have to have public hearings.
Okay. Ms. McGrew, did you have a question, comment?
Can we make a motion?
Uh, my point was to point out that, um, agreeing to make this package sale permanent is no different than someone picking up a pizza at Pizza Hut and then stopping at Publix and picking up a bottle of wine and/or six pack of beer. So I, I just want the public to understand that it's no different. It's just adding to the economic possibility to our local restaurant. And I support this move.
Yeah, definitely because the retail sales of beer and wine to go are allowed, you know, between our restaurants, our convenience stores and all. So it's, it's just affording our restaurants that same, you know, uh, benefit. Uh, and, uh, you know, actually the citizens would have one less stop if they, you know, and everyone's talking about how the model for restaurants is probably going to, or probably got, the models are going to change and, and they're going to adapt and, and continue to adapt. And I think, you know, we did hear very positive response from the restaurants that this did, did help them. Uh, so I think it's just one more tool in their arsenal to, to help support them. And again, I go back to keep as, let's keep as many of them in business as possible. We know we're going to lose some, but, uh, if this helps, you know, in any possible way, I just, I just, it's in our power to do so. I, I think we should. Mr. Estes?
Was this, um, the ability for us to create this executive order, was it driven by the governments? Are the governors order them or could we have always done it before?
I assume we could have done it. This, this executive order was done because our local, uh, health emergency, which allowed me, the executive order, to do the executive order to suspend that and then to extend it. Uh, but the ordinance, I mean, our ordinance says that anytime, Mr. Dyer, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we are subject to our, you know, revision at any time, so.
I just didn't want to get into a situation where we pass it and then the governor says, okay, COVID's over, all that stuff is done. And then we're like, oh, shoot, now we got to go do the legal. Sorry, go ahead.
So, yeah, the answer, I think, to your question is the state allows it. The State Department of Revenue allows it. Just local jurisdictions have prohibited it.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's perfect.
I mean, I, I think the state now allows delivery of alcohol now, so.
Not yet.
Or they're working on it, so anyway.
We should have always had this in our alcohol ordinance if we'd known.
Right. So, but, but again, we, things change. This is how quickly things change. And I think, you know, uh, for us to be flexible and open-minded, uh, enough to, to be able to support current economic conditions and, and it's really about economics in, in my mind. So, uh, again, this, as Ms. McGrew mentioned, that someone stops and gets food to go and they stop at, you know, Publix or, you know, a convenience store to get beer or wine, there's, there's no, no difference there. They, they can do it, they could do it now. So, um, but it's just, just expanding that opportunity to our restaurants, so. Any other questions or comment?
So then we don't do a motion tonight? We just wait for the ordinance that Mr. Dyer's going to draft?
I want to entertain a motion to, uh, ask Mr. Dyer to, to draft the ordinance. Is, was that be, would that be appropriate, Mr. Dyer?
It, it would. We, you know, in years past, we would call it the head nod. So, um, I just need direction to do it. And so it sounds like I have it. I, I don't know that we need a formal motion.
Okay.
Okay.
My head, my head.
Going nodding their heads. Sean scratches his head.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, I know our, our local restaurant owners will, will appreciate that. And, and again, we've had various positive, uh, remarks and they, they appreciated that support, so. Okay. Let's see where we are now. Okay, I think we're up to Mr. Peppers. Your report.
Uh, I just wanted to give everyone an update on, uh, our operations here at the city. Uh, as you know, we're still closed to the public, uh, through June first. We're in the middle of a, of a renovation project in our utility billing area, uh, to make it a safer, more secure area for our employees and for the public. Uh, we should be completed with that about the middle of next week and then that'll give us a couple of days to get everything back to normal down there before we reopen to the public. Uh, we... to get everything back to normal down there before we reopen to the public. Uh, we did have our first, uh, municipal court session yesterday. We didn't have any issues with that, uh, so that was good. Um, we have reopened the playgrounds, uh, the pavilions and public restrooms in our parks, uh, and signage has been placed at our parks about social distancing. Uh, we're continuing, at least in the interim, not to allow, uh, group sports and team sports. And a lot of that goes back to the fact that you're still under the state order, which is, uh, not more than ten people in a, in a single location. And so we're still, uh, we're still moving forward with, with that. Um, our public works crews have been very busy. It's Public Works Appreciation Week. Uh, and as people have been, uh, sheltering in place, they've been doing a lot of yard work. And though I know our folks have been busy with brush pickups and, uh, our roll-offs night at Ridge Road, uh, early on, we added additional, uh, roll-off capacity down there, and it still fills up almost daily. Uh, people are cleaning out their basements and they're doing minor modification projects at home. I know that group's been very busy. Um, we did, uh, uh, start last week, uh, in bringing all of our employees back into the facilities, uh, for their traditional workdays. We have not had any issues with that so far. I think all of us are excited to, to have our colleagues near us again. Uh, but we are still working, of course. Uh, uh, lots of things are remotely done, and we've had lots of, uh, Zoom calls and hangout calls and Microsoft calls and, and all of those things. Uh, and so, uh, so that's going, that's going well also. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, uh, about operations. Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you so much. I've had a couple of questions, and I'm concerned, I'm, I have questions for my own family about the roll-off site. Uh, glass recycling going on there still?
Yes, ma'am. We have a single string recycler there, so you don't have to, you don't have to sort colors or anything like that. The end product is not, uh, is not set up so that that glass is recycled back into colored glass product. So you don't have to separate browns and clears and greens and blues. Uh, it goes to a product that, that can have all colors together, so.
Does, uh, do they slide in, uh, individual bottles, or can you bag them and toss them in?
It, it, it's a true roll-off dumpster, so you can throw over the side. Um, but they can, they can throw in as much as they need to. It's a, it's a pretty good sized roll-off container.
At Ridge Road?
Yeah, Ridge Road. Yes, ma'am.
Man, I've been driving my glass somewhere else.
Now, through the, um, pandemic crisis that we're going, could you refresh me and the public on the days and times of the roll-off site, please?
Yes, ma'am. So the roll-off site is open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from seven AM to four PM. We do close from one PM to two PM for the attendant to be able to have a lunch and, and restroom break, so to speak. Uh, only, the only, uh, caveat to that is if we fill up early, the attendant will post the, the site being full at the road and close the gate. That does tend to happen on Saturdays. And so I do encourage people, if they are looking to go on Monday, to call the city first before they go. Uh, your best to go early in the morning, uh, so that you got your best chance of, of having the roll-off site ready. Uh, but if you're going on Monday morning, I ask that you call first, just to make sure we've gotten, uh, new containers in there.
Thank you. I don't think my family will be going early in the morning, but I know others will.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I would additionally note that, uh, during this time, we're not assisting individuals with pulling things out of their own vehicles. They have to do that themselves. We also do not take box trucks, so that, that limits some of the commercial use of that site.
Thank you.
It's a great, great service to our citizens, and a lot of citizens really appreciate that. And I think that a lot of citizens have discovered this site and this service, uh, during this, this, this pandemic. So, uh, I, I, that's one, one good outcome of this, of new awareness of that, uh, great service to our citizens for your charge, so.
Did anyone else have questions?
May I make a, a comment, please? I want to commend council, mayor, attorney, and all of staff who have done such an exceptional job during this pandemic. This is something none of us have trained for. There were no classes at GNMA on what to do in a pandemic. And for our brand new mayor and our brand new council, uh, what a hell of a way to get baptized into city government. And for the rest of us that's been doing it for a few years, I'm really proud of how we've hung together and gotten things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrew.
I would mention one more thing, just a reminder that, uh, we have a couple of days left for voting for the Main Street, uh, the Independent We Stand, Main Street America Contest. Uh, the hope, of course, is that we'll make the top ten, so voting will continue, uh, through the end of this week, and then they'll announce the top ten next week. And so, yeah, make sure to do that. Remember that Memorial Day is on Monday, and so City Hall and our facilities will be closed on, uh, Memorial Day. Thank you.
Convenient link online if you go to the downtown Canton page, if you go to my page, uh, City of Canton page, and, and you can just basically click on that link and vote and backspace, and you can do twenty-five times, and you can do it on your computer, and you can do it on your phone, and you can do it on your, your spouse's computer and phone, and so you can get in.
Kids' phones.
Your kids' phones. So, yeah, you can log in several hundred votes a day. And Mr. Tolan has a, has a good, uh, scheme there if you want to.
Oh, boy.
Get, get, get his, uh, call him up and, uh, or send him an email. He'll be glad to tell you how to get plenty in there. So, but everyone keep voting, so. Awesome. Mr. Peppers, anything else?
No, sir. No, sir. Nothing else. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to, uh, reiterate what, uh, Mrs. McGrew's comments, and thank Mr. Peppers, Mr. Ingram, and, uh, Ms. Fortner, everyone at City Hall, and I want to, uh, thank our public works crew and, uh, share our appreciation for them on, uh, the Public Works Appreciation Week. And they keep our city looking so great and, and, and just, we, we never get a complaint out of them, and, and they just do their job beautifully, and we, we appreciate them. So, I've got a few things, uh, quickly tonight. Um, again, I, and I mentioned before that, 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 that I'm still, uh, through all this, very optimistic for our city. We have a new business opening downtown tomorrow morning, uh, Great and Plenty, which would be a, a, a coffee and a juice bar, fresh juice bar with, uh, you know, uh, pastries and, and salads and, and health food, and, and, uh, it's exciting. And, uh, to have a new business open during this time, I think is just incredible. It shows you, uh, shows you the potential, uh, that, uh, our citizens and business and entrepreneurs still see in Canton. We have a, you know, new ice cream shop opening in, 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 uh, Canton in June. And again, I was down at the Mill in Etowah, um, last week, and they're just rocking and rolling and, uh, moving at, at lightning speed and installed a huge LED screen, and it's just going to be incredible. I'm just so excited about that. And, uh, again, we'll have our challenges, but, uh, I'm just remain very optimistic and, uh, excited about where we're going, uh, and what we're doing and, and other projects that are in discussion, uh, along the way. So, uh, also I wanted to mention that we had discussed, uh, at our retreat earlier this year about all of our wonderful committees and the work that they're doing, uh, to create our new roadmap for Canton. Uh, we discussed about starting in April and, uh, uh, having, uh, a couple committees, uh, give reports, um, you know, at every work session. Uh, so we had reports from each committee for every quarter. Again, obviously, the last couple of months, we've gotten a little off schedule with things, but these committees, it, a lot of you have been doing great work. And, and, again, I think the intent is for us to, to try to meet in, in public in June. So, uh, with that in mind, I would just, uh, like to ask if the, um, committees, if you do have something to share, just maybe be prepared to give a quick report, uh, at the June work session of, of what your committee's been doing. Uh, Mr. Tolan, uh, had this idea yesterday. We discussed that. Uh, I know the House committee's been doing some things. I, I know some of you have given updates, and Mr. Estes and Ms., Ms. Wilson gave updates. But I think it'd be good if, if we are back in, in, in public, or even if we're on a Zoom call, just this committee's just give an update, just, uh, our citizens can get a comprehensive view of what all has been going, uh, on and the productive work that has been happening. I was on a call to today. I'm, um, enrolled in this program, the Bloomberg Harvard, uh, National, um, City Leadership Initiative, and it's a, a ten-week course, and I think we're seven weeks into it. And each week there's a, a special celebrity speaker, and we've had three presidents, uh, 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 attend. And, and, uh, uh, this week's, uh, guest speaker was Dr. Fauci, and, uh, he spoke a few minutes and just kind of reminded us as, as things open up, uh, that, uh, there are three things we can all do and keep in mind to, to, to stay healthy and, and keep, uh, keep everything moving forward. It was really to wear a mask in public places and publicly, he said, you know, grocery stores and things where, where a lot of people are around. And really, wearing a mask is not, not to protect you, it's to protect others in case you're asymptomatic and have symptoms. And to physical distance and not social distance, uh, you know, be social again, but, uh, just, just keep your physical distance when you're, when you're out and about and, you know, six feet away from people. But, but, you know, get together and, and wear your mask and, you know, stay six feet apart and have a good time. And then wash your hands. So, those are three things that he suggests, and, and, uh, and, uh, he, you know, was very, you know, uh, very supportive and optimistic of, of, you know, moving forward, you know, one phase at a time. And if we kept those three, three rules in mind, that, 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 uh, he felt good about those things. Um, I did want to mention, we, you know, we still have, um, the open seat in, in Ward Two, uh, and we have discussed that a, a, a couple of times. And we have, um, uh, I think a new timeline that Ms. Fortner has gotten from the, uh, Board of Elections Office, uh, and some new information. I think we'd like to just discuss it. If possible, I'd like to add that to the June work session, just to add that item, uh, so we can discuss what our options are there, uh, going forward, a new timeline there. Uh, Mr. Peppers, if that's okay? And I believe that is all that I have tonight. Is anything else? Ms. Will, uh, Ms. McGrew?
We forgot the, uh, council introduced item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So, yes, uh, Ms., Ms. McGrew, you had item A, discussion, possible action on city support and passage of Georgia hate crimes law. Excuse me for passing over that. Didn't mean to, so.
Thank you. Hate crimes are on the rise across the United States, and hate crimes are perpetrated on the basis of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sex, or disability. Forty-six states have laws on their books to protect victims of hate crimes or solid concrete pen and have solid con penalties for offenders. Four states in the United States do not have hate crime laws on their books. Those states are Arkansas, South Carolina, Wyoming, and Georgia. HB four twenty-six is to protect the victims. If a crime is determined that the perpetrator selected the victim, victims, or property because of actual or perceived race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, mental disability, or physical disability, the judge has guidelines to increase fines or jail terms according to the range of be it a misdemeanor or be it a felony. I'm asking that Canton City Council and Mayor send to our state representatives a strong letter of support and urge them to pass House Bill four twenty-six. That is my, um, discussion for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. McGrew. I, I strongly concur, uh, with your suggestion. You know, the House, this House bill's already passed the House, and, and my understanding it's, it's, it's before the Senate for passage.
It is before the Senate, and I believe they come back in session in June.
And, uh, I understand that, that the governor's in support of this and the, um, and, and others. And so, um, I, I support this. And I think what you're requesting is that we basically send, send a letter of support from the city of Canton, uh, from the mayor and council. So, that's correct, so.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion that mayor send a letter of strong support to the senator of our area to urge him to vote in favor of House Bill four twenty-six.
Okay. A motion from Ms. McGrew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Schmidt. Uh, all in favor, say aye. All favor, oppose, say nay. Ms. McGrew?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. To, Mr. Tolan?
Aye.
Mr. Estes?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
All members voted for the motion, so we'll, we'll get that prepared and sent out. Thank you, Ms. McGrew. Okay. Did I leave anything else out? So, sorry. Um, if not, I will entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss litigation and real estate.
Go move.
A motion, a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, all in favor say aye, opposed say nay. Ms. McGrew?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Tolan?
Aye.
Mr. Estes?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
And I, we won't be coming back online, uh, for anything. Correct? Okay. Okay, all members voted to adjourn the executive session. Again, thanks to all the citizens who joined us tonight, and, uh, hopefully we will see you in person, uh, next, uh, in June. So, yes, Canton strong. Take care. Good night, Canton.
Bye.
Bye, y'all.